No, we're gonna have a public hearing on this, I think, also later on, on all these to be considered, so.
Okay.
The second reading is presented first for each one of these, in case there are questions, and then the public hearing is... We go from that, the ordinance adoptions that are listed as D and E would happen after the public hearings for the particular...
So for the second reading, it's a proposed amendment to Appendix C subdivision ordinance, to correct a conflict with state subdivision law to provide for the use of gravel roads and update phosphorus control measures.
Okay, any questions? Item B is second reading of schedule of fees. Anything on that, Peter?
No, we just have a schedule of fees we've been working on for, seems like, seems like a long time. And those have not changed from our first reading or our initial talk, so we'll have a public hearing on those.
Any questions from the public on that? Okay, item C is second reading of Appendix K, land use ordinance amendment. Peter?
Yeah. And that's proposed amendment to Appendix K land use ordinance to remove a conflict with the state subdivision law, to add regulations and a definition for tiny houses, to clarify stormwater management plan requirements, to clarify street frontage requirements for lots in Shoreland District, and to address parking requirements for dwelling units in the downtown and downtown Shoreland districts.
Any questions?
This is the second reading for the council on this, if there are any things that you wanted to...
I still think we should look at the street frontage on the Shoreland zoning, you know, and whether we really need 200 feet on a road in addition to 200 feet on a water. I think it's just gonna be a hindrance to people that have a big piece of land.
Did we... John?
There might be a little confusion about that language in there. What the change does is, it prevents having to have more frontage on the street than you would have to have on a shorefront, if the lots in the Shoreland.
Right, because you'd said originally it was 400, and now you're bringing it down to 200.
No, no, what I'm saying is that the, the street frontage of the underlying district still applies. It applies now, but if you're doing a subdivision for a shorefront lot, the shorefront would be 200 feet, but the street frontage would be 400 feet. The change says you don't have to have 400 feet, just 200.
But, I mean, do we need 200? Couldn't we just do 40,000 square feet and 200 on the water?
Well, that's essentially what you have, 200 feet of frontage. Well, you actually end up more, more than 40,000 square feet typically for a lot.
So you don't need the, the street frontage too, on the camp road?
Well, yeah. If, if the back of the lot fronts on a street, or a street passes through a lot, the frontage on that lot would need to meet the minimum requirements of the underlying district, unless it's more than the minimum required on the shore. So, for example, if you have to have 200 feet on the shore, if you're doing a subdivision right now, you'd have to have 400 feet, if the, I should say, if the lots in the rural district, you'd have to have 400 feet of frontage on the street. This change says you don't have to have that 400, just, you don't have, you don't have to have more than the frontage you need on the shore.
But what we talked about last time was, let's say somebody's got a right-of-way to their property, can they divide that lot if they've got ample frontage and ample acreage?
Yeah, as I said, there's an option in ordinance now that allows you to create a lot that has access only by a right-of-way or an easement of any width.
But then, the person with the right-of-way has more rights than a person with 100 feet of frontage?
If your lot's gonna front on a street, then yes, you need to meet that minimum requirement. Any district, any, throughout town, that require, that's the minimum frontage on the streets required, unless your lot is, is a rear lot and is only accessed by a strip of land or an easement.
I just...
What, what about if somebody owned like a peninsula of land? So you've got a lot of frontage on the lake, but very little frontage back, because it comes back and narrows down. And you've got a road that goes in and loops around. Can you have pie-shaped lots that have 200 feet frontage and go back to, to maybe only 50 feet on that road?
Yes, there are a number of different scenarios you come up with for lot configurations, but the point I'm trying to make about this proposed change is, it lessens the burden that a developer now has if they want to do a subdivision with lots at front on a water body.
But it's not, I mean, what David's bringing up, it's not necessarily a subdivision. If you've got that big lot and you want to give a piece to a son or a kid, you can't do it right now. You can't do it the way you're proposing we do it. Is that correct or incorrect?
This, this change has no impact whatsoever on the creation of a lot, except if you're doing a lot that's in the Shoreland zone and...
And a subdivision?
And a subdivision.
Only subdivision, not just dividing a lot?
In the scenario I'm giving you, in a rural district, the property owner owns shorefront property on Brewer Lake. He wanted to do a four or five lot subdivision with lots on the water. 200 feet of frontage is required.
Mm-hmm.
He would've had to provide 400 feet of frontage for each lot to front on, on a road that passes through his property. With this change, he would only have to have 200 feet of frontage on the road.
And I do understand that for the subdivision side of it, but what about the individual owner who wants to break a lot off? Can they do that or not, if they've got 100 feet of frontage on a road? Can they break a lot off?
As long as the, the lot they want to create meets the dimensional standards, it'll apply to it.
But it wouldn't have, how much frontage is required on a road in that zone?
It depends what, what zone you're in. In the rural zone, it's 100 feet of frontage. That applies to any new lot, whether it's created for a family member or to a lot to, for your own use or whatever. There's no distinction between lots created for family members and lots...
I don't mean it that way. I mean, if somebody's got a six-acre lot and they want to sell off a lot, can, and they're not creating a subdivision, they're not going through subdivision, can they create a lot without the 200 feet of frontage? Or are they bound by that?
If it's a rear lot, and it's shaped like a flag, they call them flag lots, then yes, the ordinance now allows you to do that.
What you're saying is, Mark...
And, and I think what we're looking at is the frontage on the road. So if I've got 1,000 feet on the road, but I own, but I've got 2,000 feet back there, I can't just give them 50 feet to build on.
Right, but what if you've got 300 feet on a road? Can you create, I mean, if you've got 150 feet on a road, can you create a lot or not? That's the question. I mean, that's my question. I mean, I'm not talking about subdivision.
Right. Well, no, because it says now that you're gonna have 200 feet of frontage for any lots.
If you have enough overall space...
The 40,000?
On a lot with 150 feet of street frontage, you wanted to split off a lot from that, and it's on, the lot is fronting on a road that requires 100 feet minimum frontage. The scenario of 150-foot wide lot, you can take that 50 feet excess and provide that as an access to a rear lot. If you have enough land area to do that, the lots would still need to meet minimum lot size.
Right.
But our ordinance does now allow you to create a flag lot, we call them.
Now, what's the definition of a street? How about if it's a, if it's a private camp road?
It's a private or public, it doesn't matter. If it's a, if it's a road that's used to access developed properties, you need to pay attention to the frontage requirements.
But you can, under Mark's scenario, create a lot that has waterfrontage and no road frontage, as long as that person has a legal easement across something in the front. So in that, in that case, a property owner could create a lot with zero frontage, as long as it meant the frontage requirement on the water and had a legal easement access to it.
Right, our land use ordinance currently allows a lot to be created under those conditions.
Okay, that wasn't clear last time, because I was under the impression everybody had to have 200 feet. And that's difficult on these small camp lots, or even a big camp lot, for that matter.
If you're creating a lot that fronts on a street, then you have to pay attention to the minimum street frontage required.
Or get an easement across somebody else's property to a lot that you've created that's only on the water.
Right, but my, my point is, if your lot, that you want to create does have frontage on a street...
You can't.
Then it has to meet the minimum required, unless you're creating a flag lot.
It just seems like if we had the minimum waterfrontage and the minimum acreage, then we should let them do it.
That's what you're saying with a flag lot, you only have to have that strip to get into all that land.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what a flag lot is.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't say a flag lot, but...
It's either a piece of land or an easement or right-of-way that you, that takes you to the main part of your lot.
Okay.
We've had a few like that that were recreated.
Right.
Can you create a subdivision that looks like that?
That would be up to the planning board. I don't, what they look at is whether the laws proposed meet the dimensional requirements of the land use ordinance, and that's where we're talking about, the exception for flag lots, so... It would be a decision the planning board would ultimately have to make.
Is this a state requirement?
Because it was a state requirement.
What, the changes in our ordinance?
No, no, the, the reason we're proposing this change for frontage is to address the scenario where a property owner wanted to do a small subdivision fronted on a great pond. He had to have 200 feet of frontage on the water, but he had to have 400 feet on the back end fronting on a road. And that created an irregular-shaped lot that he did not want to do. So this change will allow him to do 200 feet on the water and 200 feet on the road.
If, if the road goes through the property, does the 200 feet count on one side and the other side of the road? Does that get you, you know, if you have 100 on either side of the road?
No, it's, no, it's...
Okay, just curious.
Any questions from the public? Okay, that was, uh...
K.
C.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item D?
No. Those will, the D and E will be after the public hearings.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was gonna read those and then go on to the public hearing. Okay, the next two will have to have a public hearing, the first one being adopt ordinance, amendment to, uh, Appendix C subdivision ordinance, final adaptation, adoption, I mean, and we're gonna open the public hearing up for amendment to Appendix C subdivision ordinance. Clear the public hearing open? Any comments from the public? Anything further from the council? Clear the public hearing close. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to Appendix C subdivision ordinance. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next item is ordinance amendment to Appendix K land use ordinance, final adoption. I'm gonna declare a public hearing open on that. Clear the public hearing open? Anything from the public? Any further from the council? Clear the public hearing close. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to Appendix K land use ordinance, final adoption. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're gonna go on to item seven, discussion items for managers' clarification or direction or council discussion. Committee assignments. Susan?
At the last council meeting, we, you adopted the, the restructured committees and, um, prior to the, Council, Council Goven is the only one who has not weighed in on what his choices are for committees. So I think it, if we, if everyone gets their choice and he gets the ones that are left, he gets...
So moved. That'll take you out of the absence.
He would get finance and regulatory review, I believe. But otherwise, we have Counselor Carmichael, who was requested, services and infrastructure, Counselor Eastman, who has requested, as well as economic development, a separate one. Counselor Eastman, that same economic development plus regulatory review and services. Counselor Rabbs, regulatory review and services? I believe services was, was services your other one? Counselor Key. I don't have the paper for any, but we, each counselor ends up with two committees and the mayor is an ex officio member for the purposes of a quorum and all of them, so... We will, we will get our updated committee list published and on the website so everybody knows.
Okay.
We don't have to take any formal action. We do have to take...
No, no, that's just their assignment.
Okay, under discussion items, item B is the assess mill rate calculations for 2018, 2019.
Evening. Jeff Fitzgerald, tax assessor. So you do have the memo this time? With a table that shows the different things that have changed to, to add up to the proposed mill rate. Started at 1640 the current year and ends up at 1630, a dime decrease in the mill rate. And you can see that, you know, there were some increases to the municipal and RSU budgets and some other things that mitigated that, brought it back down actually below, including other revenues, reduction of the overlay, state payments, which are described a little below, and an increase in the tax valuation, which is also described below, which we got into last time in more detail.
I hope so, Jeff. Is that, is that set each year?
Well, technically it is, but it, it's usually pretty stable. Last year, it was going to go to what we have now with a, what is it, 62.5% reimbursement rate, although the legislature at last minute decided to keep it at 50%, so that it, the towns ended up carrying that until this year. So it, it's, it looks like a help this year than, you know, we would've had last year. And then the Betty changes are good for business, that more, more businesses are allowed to have the exemption, although it does hurt the town in that the town receives a 50%, a little more, about 58% actually for Bucksport, because of our large amount of personal property. But that is the rate at which the state reimburses for the lack of taxes on that property. We would've gotten 100%, so...
And is that the same thing, is that number set each year also?
The rate is, is only changed by the amount of personal property that we have. We used to have a lot more, you know, with the mill. Now we're down to, you know, $70 million, and that gives us about a 58% rate. They call it enhanced Betty. Most towns that don't have a, a large amount of personal property just get the 50%. So they were trying to, trying to make up for the loss in towns that would've had more. In our case, you know, the, the power plant is personal property, but they're not eligible for Betty anyway. So it, it kind of helps in both directions.
Any questions? Could've made it a little bit lower.
Lower? Hey, that's up to you. The valuation is, is not gonna change, but, you know, it's, it's all about how much you want to change the budget and other pieces.
Well, actually, you really think about it, since the mills closed and we had that jump that first year, it hasn't gone down a lot, but it's steadily heading that direction. And hopefully with new development coming, you know, we should be in pretty good shape. And to be able to hold it or even lower it a little bit and still maintain a full-service community is, is pretty good work, so, thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, we're gonna go on to agenda items. The first one will be to approve, resolve R 2018-68, to approve the schedule of fees, but we have to hold a public hearing on that first, so clear the public hearing open? Any comments from the public? From the council? Clear the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed? Move, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, resolve R 2018-68, to approve schedule of fees. Any comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next item being to approve, resolve R 2018-69, to set the mill rate for 2018, 2019.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to approve, resolve R 2018-70, to vote for the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee candidate. Did we decide on Paul again?
No, I was different from that.
Paul withdrew from that. Rick Bronson, who's the town manager of Lincoln, is the only candidate. There's a place for two candidates, but we don't have a second one, so we're recommending that the council cast their vote for the candidate who's been presented.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Any further from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to approve, resolve R 2018-71, to purchase an outboard motor for the fire department boat.
I would like to table that. Fire chief is still getting bids for that item and it's, I, I don't have a... We didn't have sufficient bids.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't see anything yet.
Move, we table. Has the, is it a replacement of a motor that they have on it now, or is it...
Yes, it's the, it's the replacement of the 30-year-old outboard that's on it at the present time.
Move, we table. We have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item nine, resignations, appointments, or assignments. I don't believe we have anything. I don't think so. Okay, item 10, approval of quitclaim deeds and discharges. I don't believe we have any. Item 10 is town manager's report. Susan?
A reminder for everyone that, who hasn't seen it yet, Whole Oceans will be having a staff person down at the local variety on Thursday mornings for the next several weeks to answer questions for people, that people may have about the coming development. I encourage anyone who's interested to stop by and talk with Jennifer. She's a, a great source of information. I think you'll find it helpful. Another great Wednesday on Main last night that featured fiddler Gus LaCasse and guitarist Peter Lindquist. The event was very well attended and $755 was raised at that event to help continue this program. I want to thank Paul Akey for spearheading this effort and for the great sponsors and volunteers who will also contribute. The week of the fourth is, will not have a program, but the July 11th show features the Mainly Country Band and it will be down at the gazebo, so I encourage you all to come and enjoy the show. The town office will be closed at, closing at 2:00 tomorrow on the 29th to allow staff to do fiscal year-end closure and reporting. And we will reopen on Monday, July 2nd at 8:00 a.m. The balance of my manager's report is just some highlights that, as we approach within a day, the end of our '17, '18 fiscal year, some of the, the things that the town has worked on in addition to providing its normal services that have happened in the last year. And we started last year the same way we're ending this year, and that's by reducing the mill rate down. It's been reduced 80 cents since it went up $3 back in 2015. But also did LED lighting in all of our municipal buildings, which is resulting in lower electric costs, and installed night sky adapters on all of the walkway lights so that more of the light is directed towards where you're walking and less is creating light pollution. The town received a number of awards this year. The Villarreal Award from the Hancock County Regional Planning Commission and the Community of the Year from the Eastern Maine Development Corporation. We started work on the EPA planning grant, have had two public sessions on that, and have a draft master plan that is completed and is being worked on for finalization. We had big news in the location of Whole Oceans to construct a land-based aquaculture project at the former mill site. We have two new businesses at the Business Park. And we've done, we have completed the secondary treatment facility for our sewer department and fortunately retained sufficient contingency from that project from grants to be able to install a solar array, which should reduce the electric costs by more than $20,000 a year from that. We received and, and completed a broadband grant, which we are in the process of implementing, and have received the SAFER designation from the Department of Labor, which only eight communities in the state have achieved for all of their departments. We did microloans to several new businesses and two existing businesses. The town council added Community Heart and Soul statements, adopted those. Started, did more ADA grants for accessibility to local businesses. Started work on a comprehensive community transportation plan. Contracted for a solar array on the Public Works Garage. Held our second annual parade of lights. Contracted with RSU 25 for provision of IT services as opposed to hiring another employee. We contracted for study of drainage issues at Woodland Heights and Forest Hills. The town is, the council has reorganized its committee structure and has been going through a process of reviewing its ordinances to make them more user-friendly. The town itself has installed handicapped accessible doors on the front of this building and has installed handicap or accessible railings at the gazebo also in its attempt to be a leader in encouraging other businesses and community areas to look at accessibility seriously when they're doing renovations. The Y has done a great job in renovating the skating rink and in renovating the fitness room and relocating that at the Jewett School. We finished our first full year of the town hauling its own solid waste to the, its final destination, which saves the town a contract of more than $27,000 a year. We, we assisted the Historical Society with its roof shingling project when it encountered some problems with the sheathing on the roof. We, the town received and implemented a grant for two additional firefighters for a three-year program through this SAFER program, and those members have been hired. And we reorganized our schedule to allow two full-time firefighter EMS personnel on a shift. We added six parking spaces on Main Street and an electric car charging station was installed in a public parking lot at the expense of a local business to promote that. We accepted Royal Ridge Drive as a town road and sold 52 Main Street to Knox Masonry, which will be locating its business at that site. 2018 Spirit of America Award was given by the town to the Heart and Soul Group, and we completed a town-wide revaluation. This, this isn't everything, but I was going through my notes from manager's reports and I thought it was notable that, in addition to the provision of the public services that we, we do, that the, the town has also done with this council a lot of work that moves the community forward in very positive ways, so...
I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to be up around the, the public swimming pool this week. The weather was a little bit better. Just to go up by there and see the number of kids and families. I mean, the parents, they're also enjoying the pool. They did a wonderful job cleaning and painting the change areas. But not only that, I also saw at... But not only that, I also saw at the Jewett School itself, on the playgrounds, is a group of activities going on for children of all ages. And it's just great to see kids actually out, actually enjoying the weather and actually doing physical play, so to speak, where they're getting some exercise. But, you know, it's, it's nice to see that our community our size has these opportunities for kids, so, and for the whole family, so. Also, the Little League Association did a tremendous job on the Reggie Gin Field, getting that ready. We're holding our first All-Star Tournament there. That's, that's wonderful what they've done up there. Also at the regular Little League field, the work that's been done there. It's just great to see all these organizations spending time, really sprucing up the town, and we should be proud of what we have here, so. Any comments from the council at all?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things that were left out in the verbal report that I think are worth noting is completing the fourth year of Marina ownership without use of taxpayer funds, and I think of great importance. I have been very impressed with Whole Oceans and how open they have been and how excited they are, and they've talked to every group in town that I know of. And I think the openness is good, even stationing an employee at the local variety for anybody that has questions, that hasn't had the opportunity to ask them. I don't think from initial looking at it that we could have a much better neighbor, corporate neighbor coming into the community.
Just, just the work's not done. You know, I, I can appreciate all that we've done and, and I thank everybody out there, but we're, from where we were to where we need to get to, I want to make sure that everybody keeps that focus and that function going forward, too.
Any other comments? If not, we'll go on to, we need to deal with a license or a permit. It's a poll permit on Route 15 for Kenny Drive. Any questions on that? Or how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Don't want to have a public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to approve the permit for a poll location on Route 15, Kenny Drive. Any questions from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 13, discussion items not on the agenda for the council or the public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items for the public? Yes, sir.
You're probably all familiar with the Silver Lake Boat Landing. I'm not here for myself, a good friend of mine asked me if I would come up here. If I knew I was going to show this, I'd make it a lot darker and you probably can hardly see it, right? Okay. The Silver Lake Boat Landing, it was originally proposed, I know they went through a lot of bring them all, the town did, and they went through DEP, and what's the other one? Which other organization I'm thinking of, they had to go through. To get the permit just to put this in. Anyway. Okay, that sounds good to me. Well, it went through the Conservation Committee anyway, to get the, to get the funds to build this. Well, anyway, it's heavily used. I think it's great. It's heavily used. And what this gentleman proposed we do is add a piece on the end, the sideways, so it looks like an L. Because I went by the other day and it's, it's really heavily used. The kids love to fish out of it and things like that. And I thought, he thought that with a piece on the end like that, it would provide a lot more safety for when they load and, and low boats. There, those people wouldn't be so much in the way. They give those people room. And I think it'd be a good addition, so. I know at first, that other parking lot towards Bangor, there's a path that goes right down, Todd, goes right down, practically the water. It was originally designed to put a wharf there, which I'm glad they didn't. I didn't think it would be practical anyway. But I think here, I think it would really be quite an asset to that landing, that's all. So I don't know if you've got any. I'm not going to, I'm not going to volunteer Mr. Hoffman's. He's got three of them up there and back of his house, but I can't, I don't have the authority to do that. But the gentleman I'm representing is Mr. Burgess, right in back of me. And he suggested that, and I said, no, I'm not going to do that. But anyway, that's, that would be the idea for us. And of course, I know we can't do anything tonight, but, is there any questions there? That the way you're doing it?
I think we're, I understand what you're requesting, yeah.
Oh, good.
If you're looking at the water, where are we talking about, to the left or the right?
Actually, on the end. On the very end of it. You put a, you don't put an extension out, you put the wharf sort of one side so it forms an L.
Okay.
And it's not that deep there either, so.
That also allows that somebody who launches a boat can go out there and, and dock, dock it out there while they're.
Yeah, they can do that, too.
Then somebody else can back in and let their boat off at the same time. As it is now, you've got to leave your boat tied up there while you pull your trailer out to go to the parking lot. So if there's people waiting in line to go in there, you know, it takes another, you know, good 15, 20 minutes before they get a chance to back in, so.
Originally, we proposed a design for two landings at once, and I felt that was going to be bad, just one. But I watched them out there. These guys are good. They'll, they'll launch it, tie it, run up that parking lot, come right back. I remember seeing it choked up so they couldn't launch a boat. It's, it's well-designed. I liked it, so. Anyway, that was his idea, and I, I think it's a good idea. So no other question? I don't disown it.
So you are his mouthpiece? I never, I never knew him to shut up.
I, I.
That'd be nice.
Hello. I'm going to present something as well for the town if it's not on the agenda. Also going on is Kids on Main. It's the free book program and free ice cream program sponsored by Main Street Bucksport Darlings, Walls Dairy Court Books That. It's placed on the alleyway between Walls Dairy Court and the Hayward House. It's every Saturday for nine weeks. The first one has already happened, so the next one will be taking place on the 30th of this month. I believe that's at 11:00 a.m. 11 to 12. Also getting ready to start up for Main Street Bucksport is $10 on the 10th. Citizens are encouraged to shop downtown on the 10th of the month. Some of the local businesses will have discounts and deals working on the 10th. I'd like to see as many people as we can in the town, show up and support our downtown businesses on the 10th of each month as a group. You can think of that sort of like a cash mob that the Chamber used to run. Back then, they used to ask you to spend $20. What I have for you here are two new commercials that the town will be airing during the months of July and August. And with these commercials, New Center has agreed during the week of Bay Festival to run a tagline through the commercial promoting Bay Festival for the entire week, and we'll do the same thing in the month of August for the Parks Festival. So for your viewing pleasure, and let's hope the audio works better today, here is commercial number one. So as you can see, the theme for this series of commercials is dock, dine, and shop in downtown Bucksport. It is part of the idea that has come out of the, out of adapt right now, so here's the other version. Those will begin airing during the morning news, the afternoon news, the Saturday report, the Sunday report. So we've got 30 of each of those videos for the next two months.
Mr. Trump?
Very nice.
I'm done.
Is there any other discussion items from the public?
I just, I want to note that tomorrow, Orland is opening its new transfer station. July 1st is their, I, I'm sorry, they're opening on the 30th, Saturday, Saturday the 30th, my apologies. And they're going to be open on Saturday. I saw a Facebook note that they were having sort of an open house and an opening on that day. But as of July 1, Orland will no longer be utilizing Bucksport's transfer station. Orland has their, has chosen to go on their own now, so it will be just Bucksport as of July 1. And we're hoping that Orland assures us that they have gotten the message out to all of their people so that we don't have any incidents on that day with people arriving at the wrong place. But there have been signs up for several weeks now that this change was taking place, and I want to wish Orland and its new transfer station all success.
Any discussion items from the council? If not, we'll go on to upcoming public hearings or topics for committee assignments. First one being schedule a regulatory review committee meeting. Who's the chairman of that now?
I don't have the chairman.
Probably said the chairman that, that first meeting.
Yeah.
And the next one is schedule a finance and investment committee meeting.
That's for the purpose of discussing the social agencies policy? And if we could maybe do regulatory review from 5:00 to 6:00 and finance from 6:00 to 7:00? Is that, but prior to the council meeting on the 12th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's on regulatory review committee?
My son, the three of us.
Paul, I think, too, I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'll get the list out to everybody tomorrow, who's on what, and then you can know where you're going to be.
Any other discussions? If not, we'll go on to item 15, adjournment.
If no adjourn. Second?
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.